This is a regular meeting in the Township of Washington in accordance with the requirements of the Jersey statutes regarding open public meetings. Notice that this meeting was legally advertised and in South Jersey Times, as well as posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Fire exits are located through the double doors in the left and right. Please silence all mobile devices. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone who does not wish to be seen on television may be excused. This will be assumed on Channel 9 every week, Sunday at 9:00 PM, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, Friday at 10:00 PM, and Saturday at 10:00 PM. We'll continue until the next meeting. This meeting is also being livestreamed. You can view it on our livestream. Please answer the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Delapia?
Here.
Mr. Yerkes?
President.
Mr. Dabarello?
Here.
Mayor Burns?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
All right, before we get started, I know that Councilman Yerkes wanted something he wanted to say.
Well, thank you. This past weekend, on Saturday, we lost a business person, a very important person, who lived in Washington Township, and she and her husband had a couple of businesses. Ruth Weiss passed away Saturday after a long illness. She and her husband started Green Tree Tobacco on Gintt on Green Tree Road many years ago. I got to know her about 15 years ago. Very kind lady. They moved their business over to Tower Center next to Village Pub, and then she also started a tea business. And at her funeral yesterday, I found out the reason she started the tea business was to serve kosher food, which is a part of their Jewish heritage and tradition. So I wanted to reach out to her husband, Bert, who is possibly and hopefully watching. She will be dearly missed. She was an important person in this community. She helped us out a lot, and I want to thank Council President Delbro for the moment of silence for Ruth.
Okay, moving on, also, we'd like to recognize Councilwoman Agnes Gardner's in the audience. Thank you for her service. And also, do we have any veterans in the room? If they could please stand, let's give them a round of applause as well.
Our first presentation tonight is to one of our devoted employees, Richard Gardner, if you would mind coming up here. Today, we gather to honor and celebrate the remarkable career of Richard Garner, a dedicated mechanic with the Washington Township Public Works Department who is retiring after 32 years of service. Richard's journey with the township has been marked by unwavering commitment, exceptional expertise, and a steadfast work ethic. Over the years, he has played a crucial role in maintaining and improving the infrastructure of our township. His skills have ensured that our roads, vehicles, and public facilities operate smoothly and safely, directly impacting the quality of life for all of our residents. On behalf of Washington Township, it is my privilege and honor to present Richard with this plaque as a token of our deep appreciation and gratitude for his outstanding service. This plaque symbolizes more than just his years of service. It represents the countless hours of hard work, the challenges overcome, and the positive impact he has made on our community. Richard, your dedication and professionalism have made a lasting impact, and you will be greatly missed. As you embark on this new chapter of your life, we hope you enjoy a well-deserved retirement filled with joy and relaxation. You have left a lasting mark on Washington Township, and for that, we are profoundly grateful. Congratulations, and thank you for your 32 years of service to Washington Township. I'd now like to introduce our Supervisor of Public Works, Brian McCaffrey. He's going to say a few words about what's going on with our yard waste pickup this last week and what's going to happen going forward.
Thank you. First, I can tell you that losing Rich is a huge loss to our department. He is fantastic, helped me every day from the day I started there, so I'm going to miss him. I know that, so is Washington Township. So I'm here just to give you guys, the governing body and the residents, an update on what's been going on with Gold Medal and the yard waste for the last couple of weeks. I have here a summary of calls. We track all this in our office, and we noticed a little uptick week before last, and then last week, we encountered what we consider to be absolutely unacceptable service from Gold Medal. On the, let's see, 5/24, we had 107 calls, 11 missed developments, and we had to really just put our foot down and say, "This is unacceptable." So talked with, you know, Joe Russo over the weekend about how we could help and try to start getting this back under control. So we started picking up yard waste ourselves in-house Monday with Public Works. We put a couple loaders out on the street. Folks may have seen them. We had loaders and dump trucks out there. I picked up several developments. I have a list of developments that we serviced ourself, so we knew that they were complete. And then we set up a meeting this morning with Kevin Hinson, who is the Director of Operations for Gold Medal, to give us an explanation for what we've been seeing and how we can get it rectified basically yesterday. At that meeting was myself, Director of Municipal Services, Ernie Durazio, and another Public Works Supervisor, Adele Riff. And what was relayed to us is that with the fact that they lost this contract and will no longer be servicing the township as of August 1st, they were having a bit of a labor shortage and morale issue. Folks were leaving them to seek other employment, not showing up for work, and the first thing that they decided to let suffer would be the yard debris. I think, based on the call volume and what we've been seeing, trash and recycling has not been a problem. It's just been strictly yard waste. So what Gold Medal has done is they've bumped up the number of trucks that are in Washington Township specifically for yard waste. Today, they had three trucks out collecting yard waste. Tomorrow, I've been told, there'll be four trucks out collecting yard waste. And as of 3:30 today, what would normally have been Monday pickup but was Tuesday because of the holiday, that route is done in its entirety. So yard waste, recycling, trash, up to speed. Trash and recycling for what would normally be Tuesday's pickup, which they did today, is complete, and about 90% of the yard waste has been picked up. So between what Public Works did the last two days doing it ourselves and the additional trucks that Gold Medal are going to be providing, they have assured us that by Saturday of this week, we will be back to square. Everything... And starting Monday, they will be on a normal schedule where you get all three phases picked up: trash, recycling, and yard waste on your normal day, starting Monday of next week. If that is not the case, the administration has contingency A, B, and C in place, and they can expand upon that if needed. But I can tell you, our hauler that we've contracted with starting August 1st is prepared and ready to pick up, starting next week, if Gold Medal fails to meet the commitment they gave us today. I've been personally out driving all the neighborhoods that they're telling me are complete, checking to make sure that that's the case. So far, the information that was provided to me today was accurate, and we are going to be out with them all week, holding them accountable to what they told us this morning. In addition to this Kevin Hinson, who's actually a corporate manager, they brought in another point person for us to have a direct line through to the street-level supervisor. I have his phone number, and I've been communicating with him several times a day, getting updates. So rest assured, it's unacceptable service that all of you, myself included. I live in Whitman Square, and my yard waste wasn't picked up. We are not okay with that, and we're doing everything we can to make sure it doesn't happen again. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer them. If anybody up there, or if anybody from the public is here for that reason, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. If that's... Yes, sir?
I would say, Wendy Way, I couldn't quite remember what it's about, the last two people going through the trash. There is one, which is fine. I'm not against taking one, going out and taking one. But it's sort of cut off with time, the current amount of coming our way, but it goes to our trash and flashlights. My personal experience, I'm working in the morning, I go through my trash in the front yard two minutes, and as a combat veteran, you may not have left this house. You know, I make jokes of it, but that's proved me, I didn't stay two days there. I never had yard waste kind of thing, but it's part of it. And then when they're done, it's all over the street.
I would say that I believe there is an ordinance against scrapping. It's not something that I would be able to enforce at 1:30 in the morning. I think that, you know, maybe the Chief of Police is here, that he could maybe mention that to patrols, that, you know, folks are going through the trash at an unreasonable hour, if they see something like that, to attempt to put a stop to it. But from my aspect, there's not much I can do about that, but we could talk with the police department about, you know, keeping an eye out for things of that nature, and reviewing the ordinance with the Chief and the governing body, and seeing how we could potentially enforce something like that. So Wendy Way, you put your trash out Sunday night? You're a Monday pickup, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. That's something that we can talk to the Chief about and talk to, you know, review the ordinance and see what can be done about that.
If you're seeing somebody suspicious that shouldn't be there, or you feel it's a problem, call 911 and get the police out there. Or even if they're just going through the trash, they could be up to other things too. Well, not every call for service requires lights, especially if they're looking for suspicious.
Go ahead, Bill. Anybody up there have anything?
I just want to thank Public Works, Brian, Ernie, Adele, our BA, Joe Russo, Mayor, Council. It was brought to you on Wednesday. Guys got right on it on Friday. I know we dispersed people out there without the right equipment, but still went out there.
Joe and I were talking on Memorial Day, and so was Ernie and I, and, you know, I'm getting off the baseball field and picking up the phone and figuring out, how are we going to, how are we going to take care of this? So, you know, everybody's committed to getting the trash picked up. We all live here, too.
I just want everybody to know that, you know, we do know about it, and we do have good people to work here who've been out there. I mean, Joe was at the trash yard at 6 o'clock on Saturday morning to make sure the trucks went out and they were going out. So if you have any concerns on the trash or anything, reach out to any one of us, Mayor, Council, BA. You know, we do hear you, and we do have a team that is acting.
And I truly feel confident that what was promised in the meeting this morning is going to be adhered to. I really believe that. They brought people in from out of state, from corporate, additional supervision, because the supervision that they have here are out driving trucks. So we have a little bit more open line of communication now, because what we were running into was the person that we were normally reporting these issues to were on a truck. Their phone was off because they didn't want to take phone calls while they're driving a truck and be unsafe. It was a little bit of a mess. They were throwing everything that they had at it last week, as they had these people abandoning the company, based on the fact that they know they're going to be potentially out of a job in a couple, you know, six weeks, eight weeks, whatever it is. So they brought in additional people, additional crews, additional trucks. So I truly believe that we will be in good shape by Monday, and I feel confident that we'll get everything back on track. Okay? All right. Thanks for having me.
Okay, now back to the fun stuff. Next, we're going to honor our Teachers of the Year and Educational Service Professionals of the Year. If you would mind making your way up here, if you're here, I'd appreciate it. We're celebrating Teachers Week a few weeks, a few weeks late because it fell after our last meeting. But Teachers Week is not just a tradition, it's a heartfelt recognition of the profound impact educators have on shaping the lives of our youth and the future of our society. As we mark this special occasion, it is my privilege as Mayor to extend our sincerest gratitude to those who dedicate their lives to the noble profession of teaching. In the spirit of Teachers Week, we gather to honor and celebrate the educators who have demonstrated outstanding dedication, innovation, and passion to their classrooms and communities. These exceptional individuals embody the true essence of teaching, inspiring students to reach their fullest potential, and instilling in them a lifelong love for learning. Through their unwavering commitment, our Teachers of Educate, our Teachers and Education Professionals of the Year have not only enriched the minds of our youth, but have also helped shape the fabric of our society. Their tireless efforts, often behind the scenes and beyond the call of duty, do not go unnoticed. They are the unsung heroes whose influence extends far beyond the confines of the classroom. Today, as we present these well-deserved certifications, let us take a moment to reflect on the profound impact that these educators have had on countless lives. Each certification is a testament to their dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to excellence in education. To all the recipients of these certifications, I offer my heartfelt congratulations and deepest appreciation. Your passion and hard work serve as an inspiration to us all. Thank you for your invaluable contributions to our community and for shaping the future generations. Happy belated Teachers Week. I'm just going to read everybody, because I'm not sure who is here and who's not, but our Educational Service Professional of the Year, Michael Otto, for Technology Integration Specialist. Our next Educational Service Professional of the Year, Barbara Keen, school nurse. And Nicole Venier, school counselor. And for our Teachers of the Year, we have Christine Gentili, who's also retiring this year after, what, 35? 35 years of service? Melissa Chalme, our special education teacher. Shannon Marino, our elementary school teacher. Did I say that right? She's not here. Mike Morrow, our teacher? He's not here. Kim Hinriches? Not here. Did everybody get one? I'll continue. Then we have Nicole DeStrallo, she's a math interventionalist teacher. Kristen Smith, another art teacher. And Shane Snyder, special education teacher. We'll make sure they get their certifications. Congratulations, everybody. We invited our nurses for Nurses Week. If any of the nurses are here, if they could come up? As we celebrate Nurses Week, again late, we are reminded of the invaluable role that nurses play in our schools and communities. Today, it is my honor to extend our deepest appreciation and recognition to the dedicated school nurses who tirelessly serve the health and well-being of our students. During Nurses Week, we pause to reflect on the extraordinary contributions of these healthcare professionals, whose compassionate care and unwavering dedication ensure the safety and wellness of our children each and every day. From tending to minor scrapes and bruises to providing critical medical assistance, our school nurses are the first line of defense in promoting a healthy learning environment. In presenting these certifications to our school nurses, we pay tribute to their commitment to excellence, their tireless advocacy for student health, and their unwavering compassion in times of need. These certifications serve as a symbol of our profound gratitude for their selfless service and unwavering dedication to the well-being of our youth. Beyond their medical expertise, our school nurses serve as trusted allies, mentors, and caregivers, providing not only physical care, but also emotional support to students facing various challenges. Their impact extends far beyond their confines of the school walls, shaping the lives of our children, and fostering a culture of wellness within our community. Thank you for your invaluable contributions to our schools, our community, and the well-being of our children. Happy belated Nurses Week. Kate, Katie Dubois? Ann Gilbert? My fingers aren't working. And Kathleen Lukewitz? We'll make sure the rest of the remaining of the nurses get their certificates as well. Okay, next up, we'd like to take a moment to recognize someone who has been an integral part of our community. Judy Lebowski, the President of the Washington Township Senior Center. Can you come up? Judy's unwavering dedication and tireless efforts have made a profound impact on the lives of our seniors. Her compassion, kindness, and genuine care for each member of our senior community is truly remarkable. It has been through her leadership that the Senior Center has become more than just a place for activities. It's a vibrant hub where friends are formed, memories are made, and support is offered. Judy's commitment to ensuring that our seniors feel valued, respected, and included is evident in everything she does. Her hard work and dedication have not gone unnoticed, and we want to personally thank Judy for her outstanding service to our community. Judy, your passion, empathy, and dedication are an inspiration to us all. Thank you for making a difference in the lives of our seniors and for being a shining example of kindness and compassion. Special Olympics. Tonight, we are honored to welcome the Special Olympics Township Tornadoes Basketball Team, as well as Coaches Ron Williams, Jim Blumker, and Darren Hart, as well as their manager, Flo Williams. Ms. Rita Brown, would you please come up? Ms. Brown, we're honored to present a proclamation to you tonight, declaring the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Washington Township. This proclamation is more than just words on paper. It's a symbol of our community's dedication to standing up against violence and advocating for change. It's with a sense of determination that we gather, not only to recognize the challenges we face, but also to celebrate our collective resolve and commitment to a safer, more peaceful future. While it's a sobering reality that every day, lives are lost and communities are shattered by the tragic consequences of gun violence, today, we come together to shine a light of awareness and hope. The statistics surrounding gun violence in our nation are staggering. Every day, 120 Americans fall victim to gun violence, resulting in over 18,000 gun homicides annually. These numbers are not just statistics. They represent lives lost, families shattered, and communities torn apart. Today, I have the honor of presenting a proclamation to you, declaring the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Washington Township. This proclamation serves as a powerful symbol of our commitment to reducing gun violence and raising awareness about their urgent issue. As we recognize this day, let us remember and honor the memory of Hadiah Pendleton, a vibrant and promising young woman who was sensibly shot and killed at the age of 15. Hadiah was a beloved daughter, a cherished friend, and an active member of her community. She was a bright student with dreams of attending college and making a positive impact on the world around her. Hadiah's life was cut short by gun violence, leaving her family and friends and community devastated by the profound loss. In a heartfelt tribute to her vibrant spirit and to raise awareness about the devastating toll of gun violence, Hadiah's friends chose the color orange as a symbol of solidarity. Their decision was rooted in the tradition of hunters wearing orange to announce themselves to others for safety in the woods and to signal to others not to shoot. By wearing orange, Hadiah's friends sought to honor her memory and those of other victims of gun violence, sending a message that every life lost to senseless violence is cherished and remembered. This symbol, yet profound gesture, has since grown into a national movement with individuals across the United States wearing orange on the first Friday in June to recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and to stand in solidarity with those affected by gun violence. Together, let us renew our commitment to reducing gun violence and creating a safer, more peaceful future for all. Ms. Brown, I'd like to inform you of some other...
Thank you so much, Mayor Burns and Council. I can't tell you how grateful I am to live in a community where our leadership really cares about this issue and recognizes how important it is. On the table up here is some information that comes from Moms Demand Action. We are a group of volunteers, men and women, gun owners, whatever, promoting responsible gun ownership. Also, our program Be Smart is for adults to help protect children. At this point in time, gun violence is the number-one killer of children in the United States, above all else. It has to be stopped. There's also another thing up here, one thing you can do, which is, it gives you some ideas. If you know somebody who's in crisis, who's struggling, and they own a gun, in the state of New Jersey, we have an extreme risk protective order, which can help them, they can help you. If you yourself are having problems, or you know someone's having problems, 988 Crisis Line is really important. On behalf of all the volunteers of Moms Demand Action, thank you so much for your leadership and all your plans to take care of us.
Okay, our last and final proclamation. I would like to invite Mark Everly of Paul's for Heroes and the members of the Washington Township Veterans Advisory Board to come up here, please. May is a month of profound significance as it marks Military Appreciation Month, a time to honor and recognize the immeasurable sacrifices made by our brave men and women in uniform, past and present. In the spirit of this occasion, it is my distinct honor to present a proclamation recognizing May as Military Appreciation Month in Washington Township to two separate organizations. This proclamation serves as a tangible expression of our community's profound appreciation for the dedication, courage, and selflessness exhibited by our military personnel each and every day. Tonight, I am humbled to acknowledge the remarkable efforts of Mr. Mark Everly and his organization, Paul's Healing Heroes. Through their unwavering commitment and his tireless efforts, Paul's Healing Heroes has provided invaluable support to our veterans in need, offering compassionate assistance and hope through the loving bond between veterans and their specially-trained service dogs. What Mark's organization is so special is that the specially-trained service dogs are all rescue dogs. As we reflect on the significance of Military Appreciation Month and express our gratitude to our veterans, let us also recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of individuals like Mark Everly, whose compassion, generosity, and commitment to service embody the very best of our community. Thank you, Mark, for your unwavering dedication to our veterans and for the profound difference you are making in their lives. Your efforts are shining, are a shining example of the power of compassion and the enduring spirit of service. We are forever grateful. Furthermore, in honor of Military Appreciation Month, I would like to express our deepest and most sincere gratitude to the Washington Township Veterans Advisory Board for their unwavering dedication and tireless efforts in serving our veterans and their families. The board's steadfast commitment to advocating for the needs of our veterans, ensuring their well-being, and providing vital support services is truly commendable. Through their proactive initiatives, the Veterans Advisory Board plays a pivotal role in fostering and supportive and nurturing environment for our veterans, ensuring that they receive care, respect, and recognition they rightfully deserve for their selfless sacrifices in safeguarding our freedoms. Their relentless advocacy, compassionate outreach, and invaluable contributions to the welfare of our veteran community exemplifies the spirit of service and embodies the very essence of Military Appreciation Month. I think he agrees with me. That's okay. We are profoundly grateful for their dedication and unwavering commitment to honoring and supporting our nation's heroes. In conclusion, as we gather here today to recognize Military Appreciation Month and to honor the remarkable contributions of individuals like Mr. Mark Everly and the members of the Washington Township Veterans Advisory Board, let us reaffirm our collective commitment to supporting our veterans and their families. Their sacrifices in service has safeguarded our freedoms and shaped the course of our nation's history. As we express our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude, let us also pledge to continue standing by our veterans, advocating for their needs, and ensuring that they receive the care, respect, and support they deserve. Together, let us strive to create a community where our veterans feel valued, cherished, and truly honored for their courage and selflessness. Thank you to all who have dedicated themselves to serving those who have served us. Okay, we actually have one more. Tonight, we're honored to welcome the Special Olympics Township Tornadoes Basketball Team, as well as coaches Ron Williams, Jim Blumker, and Darren Hart, as well as their manager Flo Williams. Would you all please come up? Do you want to wait? Sure. It's okay. Yeah, we can do it before we open to the public. Okay.
All right, now we're going to move on to something new that we have tonight. It's called A Business Corner, and we have a business. See, we have two businesses here. First, we're going to start with Embellish Events. Want to get some information. Now, they're an existing business already here, but they're going to give some updates of what's going on with their business and their huge expansion.
Hello, everyone. I'm Andrea McDonald, the owner of Embellish Events. I was here last year, guys, and Monday is our one-year anniversary of being open and operational. So I'm thrilled to be here with some exciting news about our expansion. As you see, the rendering is prepared before you. Kind of shows the expansion, what we call the Crystal Ballroom, which is a 4,700 square feet space. We would be able to accommodate about 150 people. So what this does is it gives you options. If you're looking for something smaller in size, with our original space, what we call now the Onyx Ballroom, it can accommodate 250 people. So just again, giving you options and more sophistication. A little different here, we went for more white, sleek, contemporary style here with the interior design, which is also me. So nevertheless, we are just thrilled to be here and to continue to give the community all that we have. And before I go, I just want to add that in honor of our one-year anniversary, if you know anyone that is graduating, whether it's high school or college, enter them to win a free graduation party at Embellish Events. We will be selecting the winner on our anniversary, which is Monday, June 3rd. We're going to go live at 6:00 PM on our social media platforms. So get the nominations in. Nominate whoever you feel worked extremely hard, and they deserve a free party, right? So that's our way of continuing to give back to the community, not having a birthday or, you know, an anniversary party for ourselves, but always finding ways to be a blessing to the township that we're thrilled to be here. Any questions? Any questions? Does anyone have any questions for me? No? Hi, yes? We do not. So we offer the facility, we offer custom decor, but you get to bring in your own food vendor, based on whatever your taste buds call for. So we do have a few preferred vendors on our preferred vendor list. Mission Barbecue is one of them, Axe of Grays. I'm pretty sure we all familiar with that beautiful soul, Melissa. And I forget the other ones, Cecily Love Mills. So if you don't see anyone on our preferred vendor list, but you love the food at some of your favorite eateries, nine times out of 10, you can buy a pan of baked ziti from them or whatever and bring it there. So we offer the facility, but we are, my motto is bridging the gap, because we don't charge a price per person. We charge a fraction of the cost for those type of facilities, but still trying to give you that ambiance and elegance and sophistication that some of the other venues lack.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we have a death from Fit Life who just opened up. How long ago?
Three weeks.
Three weeks ago. Tell us about your business.
Mayor, Council, I appreciate you welcoming us here and everything you've done to try to, like, welcome the business and make sure that we're successful. A little bit about us, we are in the Tower Center, Tower Square, with the Village Pub. It was originally a long, probably, some of yous remember, a long time ago was going to be an Anytime Fitness. It is now Fit Life Fitness. We will be open 24/7. You'll have 24/7 access to the facility. Our staff hours will be Monday through Thursday, 9 to 7, 9 to 5 on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, 10 to 2. Kind of ironic that we're here this week and we've mentioned the military, the nurses and the teachers. We do offer discounts to all military, teachers, nurses, healthcare professionals, emergency services. I've been involved in emergency services for 38 years, so emergency services will get a discount. Our local police, fire, and EMS will get a little bit more of a discount. Any questions anybody has for me as far as what the facility is going to be offering? We still have more equipment that will be coming in. There is group training, small group training, sports-specific training for any athletes or anybody else out there just looking to get in and feel better. It's going to be a much different feel than your box gyms. Not going to be crowded. You're not going to have to go in there and worry about, "Oh, am I going to get today's workout in?" Because people are taking TikToks on the machines instead of actually working out. We will keep it to a small, community-based facility. Anybody have any questions?
I just want to say, listen, it was beautiful inside.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I kind of have an issue or feeling of not making that payment yet since what we've been going through the last few weeks, considering the month's not over. I think we should hold that up till next meeting. I don't know what everybody else's feeling is. I know any minor work, you know, you hire somebody to do a job, and they don't do it, they kind of hold up your pay. So they haven't caught up yet, and they still have a little bit of way to go, I believe. Plus, we should probably see what the rest of the performances do for the rest of the contract.
Yeah, I agree. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for our attorney. What about that?
It's like my cousin Vinnie. What'd you find?
I've been working with the business administrator and recently reviewed the contract. I have no issue with that. Their liquidated damages clauses were missing the, missing the routes which can be withheld from the payment. As well as some actual damages that can be recovered from the withheld payment. So I see no issue with.
Okay. Then I will make a motion to approve the bill list, except Bill 01263050001. Trash collection.
I have another question.
I'll make a motion with Jackson.
I'll second that.
Page five. Reserve for open space, Brenlock Lake Parkway, paving plus LLC. Out of the open space trust, we're paying $34,156.60. Now, it was my understanding, because I'm on the open space committee, that the county was paying for this. We had no idea this was being done. Those people took out 50 trees, put it in a parking lot in a park. Vicki, you're on the committee with me. What was your understanding as to who was paying for that? Was it the county or the township?
County grant.
So I don't, I would like to have that removed from our list, and let's get this thing resolved with the county. We should not be paying for this. I'm burned up myself that in a park where we're planting trees and trying to preserve trees, the county engineers go and chop down 50 trees, and they're paying, making us pay the bill. So I would like to take that off of the bill list.
Any discussion?
Not on that.
I have no issues.
Last meeting, we held that bill for a KDI. There has been a satisfactory resolution. Council now has the correct printer, and the other printer is going to be moving to the police department so we can pay that bill.
Okay. Take a motion to approve the bill list for May 15, 2024?
With those changes.
With those two changes?
Right.
Three changes, I'm sorry. Three changes?
Yes. My changer changed, and he added back the bill that was not paid last month. Yes.
Hang on a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular minutes meetings from April 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes. Moving on to ordinances. The ordinance 0024, ordinance to the Township of Washington County of Gloucester and the State of New Jersey amending Chapter 285 zoning code, including Article XLV Cannabis Use Section 285-342 is up for adoption after a public hearing. Can I get a motion to open to public on ordinance 004-24?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now open to the public for just this. Does anyone want to speak about this ordinance? Seeing none? Motion to close, please.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a, can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 004-24?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes. The five resolutions are by consent agenda only, require both for all listed. Each one must be read separately by title. If any member of the council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate prior to the reading of the titles. Anything removed? Seeing none? Can you please read the resolutions?
Resolution 155, 2024. Resolution authorizing the municipal clerk to advertise request for proposals for 2024 professional services for foreclosure attorney. Resolution 156, 2024. Resolution authorizing the municipal clerk to advertise request for proposals for 2024 professional services for conflict planner for the zoning board. Resolution 157, 2024. Resolution approving 2024 renewals for massage parlor license in the Township of Washington. Resolution 158, 2024. Resolution approving a time extension request to Arrowak Paving Co., Inc. for the FY 2021 NJ DOT Bell's Lake Road Improvements Phase Two. Resolution 159, 2024. Resolution authorizing refund of tax overpayments. Resolution 160, 2024. Resolution authorizing an emergency temporary appropriation of funds. Resolution 161, 2024. Resolution approving a large gathering application for the Washington Township Fifth Border Club Carnival. Last, resolution 162, 2024. Resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract for solid waste and recycling between the Township of Washington and Suburban Disposal, Inc. of Gold Medal Environmental of NJ, Inc. continues in default.
Can I get a motion to approve R 155-24 to R 162-24?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes. Moving on to old business, new business reports, starting with Councilman Yerkes.
Thank you. As the representative to the Veterans Advisory Board, I want to say that we had a very successful Memorial Day service because of the inclement weather. It was decided to move it to the high school 11, 12 auditorium. We wanted to make sure that those in attendance, number one, they're safe, we wanted to guarantee their safety from the storm, possible lightning, that type of thing, but also importantly is the band members. We were very fortunate to have a band that performed very well, and we don't want them getting wet and carrying their equipment along distances. So I wanted to thank everyone who was in attendance. I wanted to especially thank our veterans. We can't thank you enough. And those who are not here, who gave the ultimate sacrifice, which Memorial Day is for, we thank them again and again and again. I saw a movie last night with Ben Affleck, you know, Pearl Harbor, and I look at that movie, and I think of countless sacrifices that our men and women over the past 300 years have made ever since Bunker Hill, and they continue to do so. And that's what Memorial Day is about. It's not about the seashore. It's about paying tribute to those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, those who couldn't come back, those who couldn't have a family, couldn't have children, didn't have the life that you and I have. One day a year, one day, to say thank you to those men and women who gave it all and didn't come back. Just watch one more movie, you know what I'm talking about. But for those in attendance tonight and those who attended Monday, I thank you. And you can see in the back wall, all of our residents who are members of the military, we pay honor to them also tonight. But thank you, men and women of our armed forces, wherever you serve, whenever you serve, we thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Yerkes. Councilman Bennett?
I'd like to thank the DARE people, the Boy Scouts, fire, police, and other general public, and Councilman Brown and myself. This is my fourth year of doing flags at Bethel United Methodist, and also Hillcrest. We did 600 flags on veterans' tombstones and also about 1,600 at Hillcrest. I appreciate everyone who came out to help us make that a great, a great event. And just make sure you know that coming up, we do have the Fourth of July Parade and also the fireworks, but we are looking for businesses to be in the parade. So if you're interested, even civic organizations, anybody who feels they can make a difference, we really want them involved in the parade. Another thing is I was at the veterans' ceremony on Monday. The high school wing ensemble was fabulous. I did send over a note to Eric Gibbs. They do a great job every time we have them in performing all the military charges. They did a great job, and great job that those kids were coming out that day. And then, as usual, my biggest pet peeve is make sure that you slow down in town, make sure that you're doing the speed limit. 25 means 25. Thanks. That's it.
Councilman Brown?
Nothing new on the library front. I'm sure by the next meeting, I'll receive some special events at the library we'll be putting on and encourage the public to attend. One of the things they offered last year was a veteran from World War II who spoke and recounted his events during World War II. He was a nurse, I believe, or corpsman, and he was very interesting talking about his experiences, and they're going to try to get him again, possibly for July or August. They will have a truck night in July. As soon as I get more details on that, we'll have the flyer put up front. Again, thank you to Public Works for chipping in and helping out, and our staff for what they've done to mitigate the problems with yard waste. Done a fantastic job, and through all the emergencies that we have, be it, you know, a hurricane coming through here or a snowstorm, they always step up to the plate and take care of us the best that they can. With regard to what Rich says about speed limits and all that, just remember for the next three years, we're going to be having the Route 42 construction project. Right now, it's in the beginning phases, but we're all going to have to bear with traffic pattern changes and some inconveniences. Also, most of the work, we hope to be done at night, but if you can find alternate routes, plan them now, just to avoid headaches and protect the workers who will be out there, whether it be during the day or at night. Just to reiterate from earlier, if you see something suspicious, say something. Call 911. The police are out diligently doing directed patrols. Chief Gersick enlightens us on the events. Every Monday, we get some type of briefing about directed patrols, traffic reports, radar posts, along with their Find Community Service event or community policing events. They do and are diligently protecting us, and we need to help them as much as they're helping us. So again, if you see something, say something. Call 911. That's it.
Mayor Burns?
Over the past few weeks, I've had the pleasure of attending several significant events that have highlighted the wonderful community spirit we have here in Washington Township. First, I had the opportunity to attend Coffee with a Cop, which is always a fantastic occasion organized by our dedicated chief and his team. It's events like these that foster strong relationships between our law enforcement officers and the community that they serve. I also had the honor of attending the Washington Township High School Honors Banquet last week. I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to all the honorees once again. Their hard work and dedication are truly commendable, and you make our township extremely proud. Another impactful moment that I had was joining Councilman Bennett and Councilman Brown in placing American flags on the gravesites of our veterans. I was at both of those events with Rich, and Don was at the last one we did, and I will always be back, so you're stuck with me on that, because I really, it was a moment that I am going to do it every year with you. This act of remembrance was a touching tribute to those who have served our country. Additionally, I was deeply honored to be guest speaker at the Memorial Day Service put on by our Veterans Advisory Board. It was a well-attended event and a beautiful tribute to our fallen heroes, reminding us all of the sacrifices made for our freedom. Lastly, I want to give a huge thank you to our Public Works Department and to our business administrator, Joe Russo. Since last week, they've been working nonstop to address the yard waste issue we are experiencing. This is an unprecedented event for myself as mayor and for our administration, and I believe for council as well. I truly believe that Public Works and Joe Russo have done a fantastic job in working to remedy the situation and respond to calls and emails from the residents. Your efforts are greatly appreciated, and I know you're probably sick of getting text messages from me about it, and I'm confident that we will overcome this challenge together. To the residents, my office is always open. Please reach out by email, phone, whatever. We are very responsive in getting back to you with anything you may have. If it's just a question, we're happy to help with anything. That's all.
Joe Russo? Mr. Wright? Vice President?
First, I want to say, Councilman Yerkes, great what you said. Just want to add on to it that, you know, we can't show our gratitude enough to our veterans, no matter how hard we try, for what you sacrificed and given to our country. We're deeply appreciative and thankful. So we'll always be by your side and behind you and have your back. So thank you. On the trash situation, I do want to thank Public Works again, Joe Russo. I know there was a lot of chatter on social media about what was being done and what wasn't being done. If you ever have any questions, call us directly. All of our numbers are out there. You know, we can try to avoid situations like that as best we can. They're still going to happen. What really matters is how you handle those situations. And, you know, we got right on it as fast as we can, worked through a holiday weekend. Everybody's phone, mayor, council, Russo is in the car. You know, it's how you handle these situations. You can't prevent them all, but you can handle them the proper way. So we will learn from this moving forward, but I think we kind of got on it pretty quickly. So well done to everybody in our group. Lastly, I want to mention, I've been working on that playground over at Washington Lake Park. It's a special needs playground called Jake's Place. We were offered a grant, we were awarded our grant for $750,000 a couple of weeks ago. It's still being finalized. We do have an event this Saturday, June 1st, at Washington Lake Park. It's at the location of the volleyball nets. If anybody could attend, it's right behind the ranger station. There's a walk that begins, registration's at 9 o'clock. There's no fee to walk. The walk will start at 10:00. It'll go from 10:00 to 12:00 throughout the park, and then there will be an event at 1:00. There'll be basket raffles, there'll be food trucks, there'll be fun things for the kids. So if anybody's interested in coming out to support, you can go to blackbirdfly.org/ walk, roll, and raffle. And one other thing is, one of the residents who are helping us with this presented a check for $25,000 towards the playground. That's Bob and Katie Martin, along with CRA Financial. For anybody who doesn't know, the grant covers about 75% of the playground. We're going to fundraise the rest. We're not going to, you know, take taxpayers' money and pay for the playground, so we're going to fundraise it. And this family, along with his employer, donated $25,000 to the cause. So just want to say thank them, and we appreciate their support. That's all, Council President.
So I just have a couple of things as well. First of all, the Memorial Day event, you know, there's something that, I do a lot of work with Gold Star families, and when you, when you go to these events and you meet these Gold Star families, you really don't have any words. There's really not any words that you can say to them. And one of them in particular that the foundation is for is Michael Strange. Michael Strange was on SEAL Team Six, and he was one of the people responsible for ruining the world of Osama bin Laden. So Michael was a very important person, and only sadly, 96 days he was on Extortion 17 when the helicopter went down. We lost 37 servicemen and one service dog there. It's still being finalized. We do have an event this Saturday, June first, at Washington Lake Park. It's at the location of the volleyball nets. Um, if anybody could attend, it's right behind the ranger station. Um, there's a walk that begins, registration is at nine o'clock. There's, uh, no fee to walk. The walk will start at ten. It'll go from ten to twelve throughout the park. And then there will be an event at one o'clock. There'll be basket raffles, there'll be, uh, food trucks, uh, be fun things for the kids. Uh, so if anybody's interested in coming out to support, uh, you can go to blackbirdfly.org backslash walk, roll and raffle. And one other thing is, one of the residents who are helping us with this, um, presented a check for twenty-five thousand dollars towards the playground. That's Bob and Katie Martin, along with CRA Financial. For anybody who doesn't know, the grant covers about seventy-five percent of the playground. We're going to fundraise the rest. We're not going to, you know, take taxpayers' money and pay for the playground, so we're going to fundraise it. And this family, along with, uh, his employer, donated twenty-five thousand dollars to the cause. So just want to say thank them and, uh, we appreciate their support. That's all, Councilman.
So I just have a couple of things as well. First of all, the Memorial Day, uh, event, you know, there's something that I, I do a lot of work with Gold Star families. And when you, when you go to these events and you meet these Gold Star families, you really don't have any words. There's really not any, any words that you can say to them. And one of them in particular that the foundation is for is Michael Strange. Michael Strange was on SEAL Team Six and, uh, he was one of the people responsible for ruining the world of Osama bin Laden. So Michael was a very important person and only sadly ninety-six years he was on extortion seventeen when, when, uh, the helicopter went down. We lost thirty-seven servicemen and one service dog there. So there's really no words you have for this. So events like this that we have in Washington Township, I think just try to show our gratitude to these veterans, try to let them know. I was honored enough to push a two, a wheel, a wheelchair, uh, of a World War II vet down to, to the event and then had the honor of pushing him back up again and got to meet him and got to meet his wife. So appreciate them. We had some really good laughs and some good stories and that they, that they shared with us. Also wanted to thank, uh, the, uh, last week was Sherry Donovan's last day. She was in construction. She also retired, so we thank her for her service here in town. Also Monica, Cindy and Kathy. Kathy's last day. Kathy's actually the chief secretary. Tomorrow's her last day. She's been such a valuable asset to Washington Township. She's right up there with Monica and Sherry and Cindy and all, all their hard work. I mean, these are the people that really keep Washington Township. You know, we, a lot of people think it's, it's mayor and council, but it's really the people in the backgrounds that keep our town running. And that's really why we're so thankful to our Public Works and people like Joe Russo, because they really work hard. You know, they keep us informed and we're calling them and we're, but we rely so much on them. And that kind of brings me to my next point was, I don't make a big deal about it, but what, Monday was my birthday and, uh, I don't really tell anybody, yes, yes. So I didn't tell anybody, but Barb seemed to tell people in the, in the clerk's office and they all wore blue and they had, uh, and they had, uh, balloons for me. And I just want to say, and I, I say this a lot, but I really mean it. You know, I got involved because I wanted to make a difference in other people's lives. People like Chrissy and Barb and everybody in that department, really, you, you guys make a difference in my life. I, I just really appreciate you. It really meant a lot to me. I, I, I was truly honored that you did that. It really gave me a good laugh with everybody wearing blue. So I, I did, I did, I did appreciate that. And the last thing was just about our business corner. So we want to give businesses an opportunity to come and, and, you know, give them a chance to showcase their business just outside of the regular, just cutting the ribbon. But with us, it's not about just cutting the ribbon. It's about, here it is a year later. You sat, you, you were here one year ago, towns, but here you are with this huge expansion. We're so proud. We're so proud you chose Washington Township, so proud of you. Also a fellow, a fellow lemy of the, uh, Washington Township, uh, Neighbors Magazine, correct? Yes, you were on there before, Chief, but yeah, you were, you, you, yeah, it, it, great article if you get that one as well. So these are the people that make up Washington Township. These are the businesses. They're so important. So please try to, try to use their businesses, try to, try to think about them, you know, look at the beautiful pictures and what, what Washington Township really is. This is really what represents Washington Township. So, so much to be thankful for. That's all I have. We're going to move on to public participation, please. Oh, you want to, you want to do this? Yeah, sure.
Guess I'm going to hold it. Tonight, we're honored to welcome the Special Olympics Township Tornadoes Basketball Team, as well as coaches Ron Williams, Jim Blumker and Darren Hart, as well as their manager Flo Williams. These athletes before us have played basket, played basketball for Challenger League for many years together. They enjoyed playing together so much that the coaches decided to form a Special Olympics Basketball Team for competition. In the Special Olympics, you are only allowed ten athletes per team and that is how the Township Tornadoes team got started. The team consists of Andrew Ahart, James Bloome- Blumker, Blumker, Michael Givens, Torrin Hart, Thomas Mueller, Riot Murray, Nina Marie Patrangelo, James Stapleton, Davis Tross and Michael Williams. In two thousand eighteen, they made their debut in the Special Olympics Arena, securing fourth place in the regional competition. The following year, in two thousand nineteen, they soared to new heights, clinching the gold medal not only in the regional competition, but also at the state level. Although the regular season of games in two thousand twenty-two was cut short, their spirit remained unbroken. No games were played in two thousand twenty-one, but in two thousand twenty-two, they once again showcased their competitive skills, securing fourth place in the state competition. In two thousand twenty-three, the Township Tornadoes bounced back, claiming the gold medal in the regional competition and adding a bronze medal to their collection at the state level. This year, they cemented their legacy as champions, securing double gold in both the regional and state competitions. These accomplishments are a testament to the dedication, hard work and spirit of the athletes, coaches and supporters of the Township Tornadoes. Through their tireless efforts and unwavering determination, they have not only achieved sporting success, but have also inspired us all with their resilience. To Ron and Flo Williams, you've been unwavering pillars of support for the Special Olympics and the Township Tornadoes Basketball Team. And we wanted to present to you tonight this plaque as a way of saying thank you for your selfless dedication as it has made a lasting impact on so many. Congratulations on twenty years of excellence. Your achievements have brought honor to our community and we are immensely proud of all of you. Congratulations.
I'm glad you're here.
Listen, we got to play every team in town, right? We got to lose to everybody.
All right, moving on to public participation, please follow public decorum posted, which has been attached to the public agenda. Limit your comments to five minutes. Once you've completed your comments or your questions, please take a seat. Hold on a second. If any member of the governing body or their destiny wishes to address your comments or questions asked by the person who just spoke, can I get a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now motioned open to the public.
I'll go first.
Sure.
Counsel, mayor, Joe, counselor. My name's Frank Alexander, four ten paddock court, right here in Township. I don't know where to start, but I just want to say thank you. Recently, I had the distinct pleasure of placing ceremonial American flags on Egg Harbor Road in the, um, Old Stone House Historic Village and in front of Holy Family Church. Now, Holy Family Church gave me permission, but you guys made it possible for me to be able to do this, um, on Egg Harbor Road. And with the mayor's assistance, um, we've been allowed to keep the banners up. Flags we take down during the holiday, uh, summer and Joe Root, uh, Joe, um, Brian McCaffrey's been great about cutting the lawn and then letting us know when we can put the flags back down. This township will continue to see that. Um, the Tri-State Veterans Memorial Fund, of which Mr. Double O is on the board, Lori Morello, and I believe Pete Amoroso is back there. Where do you leave? Anyway, there's a bunch of township members, most of them are Knights of Columbus, that, um, have helped me. We're committed to our veterans, specifically veterans with PTSD. And again, I want to thank the mayor, the council, Lori Morello, and the Veterans, um, Memorial Council here in Township for their assistance. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none? Motion to close?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next council meeting is scheduled for June twelfth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now adjourned.